Okay. Good evening, everybody. Would you please rise to salute the flag? Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation, one God, equal civil, liberty, and justice for all. You may be seated. Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Nutter?
Here.
Mayor Samaras?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty? Mr. Howie?
Here.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Mr. Lay, where is he? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the empty chair. I apologize for that. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, we have the minutes for approval, the minutes of the regularly scheduled Lowell School Committee meeting of Wednesday, June 20, 2018. I need a motion to accept and place on file by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Nutter. Next, we have the minutes of special meeting approval, the minutes of the special meetings of the Lowell School Committee meeting on Monday, June 25, 2018. I need a motion to accept and place on file by Mr. Howie, second by Mr. Lay. Thank you. All right, we have some issues, but because we have a number of speakers tonight, I'd like to request that we go to, right away, to portions six, 6.7, 6.8, 6.9. Take them out of order. Need a motion to do that? Second by Mr. Howie, motion by Mr. Howie, second by Ms. Martin. Thank you. All right, the first motion by Ms. Dougherty and Ms. Martin, it does not need a second because it's been filed by two school committee people. For good cause requests, the mayor and the city solicitor prepare a notice of termination pursuant to section five of the employment contract between the superintendent of schools, Solak Alphawi, and Lowell School Committee. The notice should be reviewed and approached by the committee prior to the service upon the superintendent. Okay, with that said, we have, how many speakers tonight? We have 12 speakers, and I'd like to request that we allow the 12 speakers to speak first before members of the city council, if that's okay? All right, thank you. Will a clerk please call out the first speaker?
Kristen Schultz.
All right, for the record, you have three minutes. What we need is to have you give your name and your address, and then stay on Pelington. You should be okay. Thank you.
Okay, and good evening. My name is Kristen Schultz, 58 Prescott Street, Lowell, Mass. I am a Lowell taxpayer. I am a Lowell High School teacher. I am the mother of a 2018 Lowell High School graduate. I am a United Teachers of Lowell Union official, and I am here to speak in staunch support of Superintendent Kalfawi. For the sake of time, I will recap for the school committee just a few of the ways in which Dr. Kalfawi has improved Lowell Public Schools. First, Dr. Kalfawi has successfully seen this district through three grossly underfunded budgets and has worked tirelessly each time to ensure that the students' needs and success remain top priority. Second, in his commitment to improve the culture and climate at the high school, Dr. Kalfawi made sure to appoint the most qualified and competent head of school, and together he and Ms. Bestead have begun to make Lowell High School a better learning and working environment for students and staff. Third, the safety and well-being of this district's students and staff was of the utmost concern for Dr. Kalfawi, as evidenced by his appropriate responses to the heating and air conditioning crises across this entire district. And in that vein of safety and well-being, he has enacted free lunch and delayed opening policies to the benefit of all. Dr. Kalfawi, though challenged at every turn by certain school committee members, has, with his commitment to students, staff, and the parents of this district, been the driving force in moving this district forward, a commitment that is evidenced by his decision to withdraw his name from the running of Randolph Public Schools. He has undoubtedly had a stabilizing, positive impact on this district, and yet these certain school committee members, inciting good cause, have put forth motions to place him on immediate administrative leave and to begin his termination process. The phrase "good cause" by itself is not a reason for suspension or termination; rather, particular facts must be examined to determine whether or not those facts actually amount to good cause for suspension and termination. You can imagine, then, that while preparing to speak here tonight, I was utterly confused and concerned that there has been no identification whatsoever of the facts that constitute the good cause immediate suspension and termination process of Dr. Kalfawi. With all proficient ratings, with public support of other school committee members, and in the absence of any concrete facts for these motions against him, the only conclusion I am able to draw is that these motions for the good cause immediate suspension and termination process of Dr. Kalfawi are strictly political in nature and not at all practical or legitimate. To that end, I implore this school committee to reject the political animus of these motions against Dr. Kalfawi and to support him now more than ever so that he may continue to provide this district's students, staff, and family members with the stability, safety, and success they so deserve. As a matter of fact, I believe it is incumbent upon this committee to do just that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kim Scott.
A little hi. Hi, my name is Kim Scott, 27 Commonwealth Ave., and I'm the mother of two children at the Pine Arts School. I wanted to, I have to follow that, that was really impressive. I wanted to express my concern that it does not seem this committee has given the public a real explanation of why we are trying to fire Dr. Kalfawi, who is the fourth superintendent we've had in 10 years. I wrote this letter to The Sun, but it did not make it in, so I'm reading part of it here in the interest of time. Three years ago, I voted to hire a highly qualified, thoughtful, ethical leader to be superintendent of the Lowell Public Schools. Now we stand at a point where three school committee members have banded together with a motion to fire the superintendent. The question is why? Why are three members of the school committee intent on removing a successful superintendent? Could it be the budget cuts that forced significant reductions in the 2019 budget? The superintendent doesn't control the size of the budget, which is determined by appropriations by the state legislature, Chapter 70, and from the city council from local taxes. As for the budget itself, the superintendent can only recommend a budget to the school committee. It is adopted by the school committee. Could it be poor performance in the schools? By all measures, the schools have improved under the leadership of the superintendent. Dropout rates are down to a record low. Test scores are improving, with many schools achieving above the state average. Scores in 2017, used in the next generation of MCAS, were the highest in the history of the district. What could be more important than that? Or could it be the actions of three school committee members, who have been actively, consistently undermining the work of this administration? Do they have a personal axe to grind? It is frustrating to see three members working against the best interests of the children, the taxpayers, and the long-term success of the Lowell Public Schools. I feel the decision to fire or retain our superintendent will essentially be in the hands of Mayor Samaras, who presides over the school committee and will make the deciding vote. The mayor is elected by the council as its representative to the school committee and brings their voice to this table. That voice could be one of reason, a voice for stability, a voice to continue the progress Superintendent Kalfawi is making in a difficult environment, or that voice can embolden the critics, drive the school district into utter chaos, and reward the relentless attacks on an ethical leader who is attempting to do the right thing for our city, our taxpayers, and our children. I hope the mayor will do the right thing to take control and rid our city of this toxic move to fire the superintendent. That's from my letter. But I would also like to point out, this superintendent has brought Lowell families free lunch for all, when others in the past said it was too much paperwork, an updated wait list that allows parents to have multiple choices, when others said it was too much work, in-district special needs classrooms, which others never succeeded to do, a lunch and recess policy to provide equity across the district, and delayed school starts during poor weather, when others felt parents would not be able to understand the concept. I know some like to take credit for these accomplishments, but they are the work of this administration and the staff. I urge you not to fire our superintendent. Thank you.
Ben O'Para.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, City Council of Lowell School Committee members. My name is Ben O'Para, and I live 44 St. Montwell, 46 E. G. Lane in Potucketville. I work in Lowell all around 44th Avenue. I am not going to go into specifics so much this evening, for very obvious reasons, for time limitations and other ancillary things. But I would like to point out that I have seen this city. I have served in various committees, both to hire personnel for the school system, appointed by the superintendent and his office, and I have seen no better committees formed. We have, we diligently worked in all the committees I serve to make sure that we provide this district with the best qualified candidates there are. One of them is the head of school of Lowell High School. So with those, and so many other things, like I said, I'm not going to go into specifics, one will wonder, why is such a motion on this floor to fire this superintendent? One will wonder, what is going on, that we have four superintendents in the space of 10 years? On the average, that is two and a half years per superintendent. One wonders, how does the outside world view us? They view us, with those numbers, as a dysfunctional school system. They view us as a chaotic school system. And we must wake up to how our image is seen outside of this city. I chose to live in this city, and I have lived here 30-plus years with pride. And I own this city. This city is my pride. I'm married from here. My children, all were raised here. They all went to Lowell High School. And events like this just smack off me as a little out of the ordinary and shameful. We have to defend what we own. It is you, our elected officials, that should stand up. There is a throng of people in this city who are sitting by the wayside, who pay taxes, who have gone beyond the specter of being beneficiaries in this system, who are constantly knocking to be benefactors, to be accepted. They are knocking at the door, wanting to be accepted. There is a compromise we have right here in the superintendent. Now, it is good to talk the talk, but we have to learn to walk the walk. We, this throng of people, cannot all of a sudden be devoid of the little voice that they have. They want to get on that dining table, and there is their foot right on that dining table, and we want to scrape them off. I think it is uncanny. So ladies and gentlemen, I want you to consider, these three motions, there is no way we can vote yes in any of those motions without robbing people off, without giving us a black eye. Again, my name is Ben O'Para. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Susan Yuzani.
Hi, I'm Susan Yuvani. I live at 234 Nesmith Street, Mayor Samaras, Superintendent Kalfawi, and members of the school committee. I teach second grade at the Moore Elementary School. I teach reading, writing, science, social studies, and math to eager, curious, and trusting seven-year-olds. Equally as important, I teach honesty, integrity, courage, advocating for oneself, and speaking up when something is wrong. I am here because something is wrong. Something is wrong when members of the school committee do not follow respectful, established protocols for handling issues. Something is wrong when every time an effective superintendent makes a decision that does not align with the status quo or the Lowell way, there's no discussion, only public humiliation in the Lowell Sun. Something is wrong when this nonsense is brought forward in July, when school is not in session, and proper public support for our superintendent may not be at its strongest because teachers and staff are away. Something is wrong when your political agenda disrupts the entire school system, teachers, parents, and most importantly, students. I implore you, stop it. I support Superintendent Kalfawi. I would like to publicly thank him for his strong commitment to students first and teachers, and for having the courage to speak up when something is wrong. Respected members of the Lowell School Committee, we are better than this. Please, let's work together and get back to putting students first in Lowell.
Miki Dumont.
Good evening, Miki Dumont, 62 Wynwood Road, Lowell. Graduate of Lowell Public Schools, a parent of two Lowell High School graduates, grandparent of currently four grandchildren in Lowell Public Schools, also a retired teacher of 35 years. Each time I come to this podium to speak, I always think it's my last time coming here. And then something like this happens, and my blood starts boiling. I've been connected to Lowell Public Schools for many years, and they have always been controversial events, but never any so great as last week's posting of the school committee agenda for tonight's meeting citing two motions to terminate Superintendent Kalfawi and one motion to place him on administrative leave. It was almost as if the motions came out of thin air, but not really, because this superintendent has had opposition since his very first day in office, with certain members of this and the previous school committee. It's painful to launch school committee meetings on local cable, as some school committee members address this superintendent with such disdain and blatant disrespect in their questioning and request for information. I've worked with this superintendent for three years in my capacity as a union officer. I've not agreed with all of his decisions, and we've had disagreements over important educational issues. I've always found him to be willing to listen to differing points of view. He is generally very receptive to changing a decision he has made if it has been determined not to be working as expected. Our staff members work with the most vulnerable student population, and what we need most in this district is stability in the top office. You don't get stability, nor do you get continuity, when your top manager gets pushed out every third year. It takes time to develop working relationships with people, and if we're constantly robbed of that time, it seems then that we are always starting over. As a gateway city, we just don't have the time for that nonsense. This superintendent should not be penalized for making decisions based on a woefully underfunded budget and should instead be receiving the greatest support and input possible by the people who are his evaluators. Rather than focusing on budget issues that are way beyond anyone's control, it would be much more productive if all of you voted instead to engage in rational discourse with this superintendent and redirect your energies to our state delegation to insist that they fight for fixing the foundation budget that has created many of the problems in this district. We have urgent issues in this district, far more urgent than what is on the agenda tonight. I implore the school committee to vote to retain this superintendent tonight and put your heads together to vote for improvements in our schools, so that maybe next year our students in every school can enjoy heating and air conditioning like we're feeling right here tonight in Lowell City Hall. Thank you.
Darcy Boyer.
Good evening. My name is Darcy Boyer, and I live at 235 Avon Street. I'm the mother of a rising third grader in Potucketville Memorial and a member of Lowell Education Justice Alliance. I'm here tonight to show my support for Superintendent Kalfawi. I have found him to be open and collaborative in his leadership approach and believe that he has the best interest of students and our schools at his core. Unfortunately, he is also in the impossible and thankless position of having to balance a budget with insufficient funds. I appreciate that many of you take great care in reviewing the budgets that are given to you. That is an important part of your job, and I'm thankful for that. But I think in this process, you have lost track of the plot. We are so busy dickering over $1,000 line items that we failed to address the very real funding crisis in our public schools. Here are some things I would rather have seen on the school committee agenda and in the Lowell Sun. Next year, we're paying out $19 million to three charter schools. $19 million. We have a $2.5 million deficit, with $19 million leaving our district. Some estimates I've seen say that we'll lose an additional $2 million next year. That makes $21 million. Can you imagine what we could do with that money? What are we doing about that? Are we pushing the state to fully reimburse us for those costs? Because there's action at the State House to do just that. The Mass Budget and Policy Center just released a report that says the state is underfunding our schools by $1 billion a year. Just last week, the State House voted on a foundation budget that did not include the recommending provisions for English language learners and low-income students. What are we doing about this? What are our state reps doing to advocate for our schools? From what I've seen, not much. Brockton and Worcester are actively looking into suing the state to meet its educational obligation. Maybe we should join them. Finally, on a different note, one that's not budget-related, but one that speaks to the kind of schools that we want and the role of the school committee, just this week, the NAACP came out against using high-stakes tests as the primary measure of a school's success. Like many educators and parents, they have seen that the original intent of high-stakes testing, to close the achievement gap, has not worked, and in fact, the tests have harmed many of the students and schools they were supposed to help. We know that the pressure of the tests has limited our curriculum, sucking much of the joy out of learning and teaching. What are we doing about this? Our job as parents and educators, your job as a school committee and administration, is to advocate for our students and our schools, and that means we have to push back on damaging policies. So these are some of the issues I'd like to see a public discussion and debate on. What is it that we want for our schools? What is the purpose of education? And what do we need to do that can ensure that all students get the education they deserve? Sometimes I get the feeling that the members of this committee think they have no say in what happens at the state level, that we must simply accept what is handed down to us. I heard that during the school committee debate, when candidates were asked their opinion on high-stakes testing. Most candidates said they did not like the impact of high-stakes testing on our schools, but then said, "But that's a state mandate, that's mandated by the state, and there's nothing we can do." No, no. It is our obligation to fight for what we know is right for our students and our schools. The school committee can organize parents, teachers, students, and staff to push the state to meet its obligation. We can join with other communities who are facing the same issues.
Can you come to closure?
Last paragraph. We are more powerful together. I would like to see us fight for something rather than fight against each other. So the items we are speaking on tonight are a distraction, and I want to support the superintendent, and I urge you to retract these motions before the school committee. Thank you.
Ralph Arudis.
Laura Ortiz. Hi, everyone. Laura Ortiz, 1284 Lawrence Street. So I just want to say thank you for what you have done here, and I hope that you stay as long as you want to, and forever, if that. You have done an amazing job. You're a man of honor, distinction, you have sympathy for the students, you listen to the parents, you listen to the staff, and you truly care about each and every one of us. It is unbelievable that they would ever try to terminate someone right now who brings such diversity and such meaning to a district in the middle of a voting rights lawsuit. It's just unforgivable, and I want to apologize. I don't think this should ever have been done to you. It's not brought by the parents. I don't think it's a wish by most of the people in the community. I'm not quite sure, other than politics, why it's being done to you. As far as a lot of the public records that I've requested, there's been so many that show the change that you have done. show the change that you have done despite the undermining effects of a lot of the policies that you have nothing to do with. You don't have anything to do with the foundation budget. You don't have anything to do with how the student activity funds are being spent at the different schools. You don't really have a lot to do with the diversity and the lack of it upon hiring, and I believe it's a principle to do the hiring in the schools. However, you have tried your best to try to listen to what we have to say and to make changes that are making an impact. To remove you, to me, is the equation of segregating one of the best superintendents that we have had and that we have need, and this district and city have waited almost 30 years to see, and it's just unforgivable. I mean, no disrespect to who made these motions, but I just implore you to pull them back. We don't need any more infighting, I mean, with what's going on. You know, as far as the maintenance in the school, a lot of these are city issues. There's nothing to do with it. You can't help whether they maintain the schools or not. And as one of the parents that did make complaints and did speak a lot about this, it had nothing to do with the performance of the superintendent, and it's an embarrassment that he's being asked to be removed. It's just unheard of. Please do not do this. This is a man that these students deserve. This is a man that should continue to the path of the equity that you can see that he's made if you've looked at the public records request. And I just want to say thank you. You are blessed that we have you here, and I truly, truly hope that you stay for a very long time. And don't let them push you around. Stay here. You fight, and we will stand behind you. Thank you.
Chris Gekes.
Good evening. My name is Chris Gekes, and I live at 108 Lauriers Street. I'm a taxpayer in Lowell. I'm 49 years old, and I've never been to one of these meetings. I've never spoken at one of these meetings. But I read yesterday that there was an effort to remove Dr. Kay from his position, and I was outraged, outraged because in reading the Lowell Sun article, there was no reason given. There was no reason given. And as a taxpayer in Lowell, I think that you owe me a reason as why you want to remove my superintendent. So, I did want to write something down and explain a situation that I had last year, a couple of years ago, with my daughter, and tell you what happened and how he really did help me, but I think it would sound a lot better coming from her, so if you don't mind. My daughter, Sophia.
Out of respect for the committee members that support Dr. Kay, good evening. However, I don't think this is a good evening. I am angry and confused as to why someone who made such a difference in my academic career is being treated so disrespectfully. Let's go back two years so I can show you how he made a difference in my life, and maybe you will see how important he is to the students of Lowell. In August of 2016, I was diagnosed with ADHD combined type and executive function disorder, specifically the inability to regulate my emotions. I was entering the fifth grade and transferring into Lowell Public School System. Not only did I have this new diagnosis to understand, but I was still starting in a new school with no friends. Learning to live with this disability was and is difficult for myself, my classmates, my teachers, and my family. It makes me impulsive, loud, unorganized, forgetful, fidgety, unable to focus, and at times, very excited. Luckily, most of my teachers understood this, but one did not and held all of my negative behavior against me. When it came time for my second quarter report card, she gave me a C for conduct, ruining my chances for an academic medal for honor roll at the end of the year. I had the necessary grades, just not the conduct. Despite my disability, academics have never been a problem for me. I have always maintained honor roll status until this one teacher. I went home and cried because I didn't make the honor roll due to that one C. My parents contacted the teacher and spoke to the teacher, and she refused to change their conduct grade. They then pleaded with the vice principal and principal, and again got nowhere. They also got letters from my behavioral specialist that diagnosed me and my pediatrician stating that penalizing a child for their behavior by way of academic award could be detrimental to their self-esteem. Again, the school refused to do nothing. At that point, I told my mom I was giving up. I asked her, "What was the point of trying to get good grades if I can't get the medal at the end of the year?" I was feeling hurt and frustrated, so I told my mom I was purposely going to fail the MCAS just to make the teacher and the school look bad. My mom said not to think like that. She said she had one more person to meet with that might be able to help me. My parents met with Dr. Kay and explained everything that I went through. He agreed with my parents that my behavior should not affect whether I get an academic award. He felt that academic awards should be used to recognize academic abilities as an incentive to encourage students to want better grades regardless of their behavior. I did get my medal for maintaining the grades needed for honor roll all four quarters in the fifth grade. This year, I received high honors all four quarters and received another medal. At a time when I felt like my school had given up on me, I felt like giving up on the school. It wasn't until Dr. Kay was involved that I had the drive to try again. It was his determination and genuine care for his students that not only allowed me to maintain my grades, but regained my self-esteem. Please don't fire Dr. Kay. Thank you.
Amy Bisson.
Good evening. My name is Amy Bisson, and I live at 130 John Street in Lowell, and I'm here as a former LPS educator and a community ally. I am also a member of Lowell Education Justice Alliance. I will come right to the point. I have had several opportunities to work with Dr. Kelfawi and to interact with him. And while there are, from time to time, decisions on which we might disagree, I feel Dr. Kelfawi has the best interests of Lowell schoolchildren at the very core of his decision-making. He's been approachable, and he listens to what I have to say when I have to say it. I believe that dismissing Dr. Kelfawi would be disruptive to the work and to the accomplishments needed to continue the progress we've made in the Lowell Public Schools. I am appalled that dismissing Dr. Kelfawi would be disruptive. I'm appalled at the three motions on tonight's school committee agenda and that they appear to extend business as usual, that business-as-usual model that we use here in Lowell for insider politics. It is a mistake to think that the recent pattern of three years and out is not being noted by potential candidates for school leadership positions. When Lowell's reputation as a tough gig is reinforced by the acrimony and divisiveness we've seen recently, Lowell cannot expect to attract or retain diverse, creative, and intelligent leadership for our complex and large school system. Tonight should be a first step in ending that revolving door policy whereby a superintendent falls out of favor for some unpopular decision-making. Just seven months ago, this body, the school committee, gave Dr. Kelfawi an overall proficient evaluation. It does not make sense that tonight, some members of this body want to not only find cause to dismiss him, but to put him on administrative leave. What could possibly have changed so drastically over the last year? I urge you to do the right thing and withdraw these motions. Thank you.
Jim Peters.
Hi, I'm Jim Peters, 30 Chelsea Avenue, Lowell, Mass. I'm a little surprised that we're at this point, and I'm extremely surprised that we're at this point. Dr. Kelfawi has been on my show once a month for two years. If there had been any need to talk about something that was unpleasant, we certainly would have talked about it, but there was nothing that we had to talk about. We had a very pleasant series of conversations. When my father was on the school committee, he had a lot of power, because the school committee had a lot of power at the time. He could help set budgets. He could determine where the school committee money came from and where it went to. He petitioned the Massachusetts Legislature to diminish the power of the school committee. When he finished with his petition, it was as normal as was normal in the 60s and 70s, they, meaning the state, had diminished the duties of the school committee to just one, that being the obligation of the school committee to hire and fire the superintendent. I have a ton of books at home telling me that that is all of the power the school committee has, and that basically is right. Tonight, we look at the two motions on cessation of the superintendent's duties in the city. It is not that the man in question, Dr. Salak Kelfawi, has done anything wrong except having the temerity to look at enticement for the city's school superintendent's duty, and one could hardly blame him for that because this has scarcely been a stellar school committee. It has been one rifled and trigg and sharp with the arrows of outrageous fortune, as Shakespeare said. You are sending all the wrong messages. Your singular message should be that things are going well in the school department and that we have to keep the ball rolling. Instead, you seem determined to be like the red rubber ball in that famous song by The Circle. Your sun is setting, and little can be done to bring it around again. Most of you can identify with the phrase, "A better time is coming." Some of you cannot identify with that phrase because you're so negative. This is historically one of the best school systems of all time. People used to come here, pay to come here. That should be our goal. We are a school district of first. One of our graduates worked at NASA and invented the wings on the space shuttle, which I bet you don't know, after his graduation from MIT. Others improved the looms, built the canal for transportation with wooden boats that could not float lower than three feet, though fully loaded. And those were the boat builders. They worked for the Middlesex Canal Corporation. They built 27-mile canal out of mud. Lowell has always been a city of dreamers. Our early school system was filled with people who demanded an education to be held in the evening so they could work. They got it, and they still have it. The STEM program is helped by this man, whose PhD is, I believe, in mathematics. He can identify with those kids. Let's quit getting rid of superintendents because they don't give us immediate results. My father was a superintendent who was fired while he was hot. He stayed in Lowell because his children chose to stay here. Now, I have been sick for three straight weeks, but it is this effort that is getting me ill. Let's get together. Let's build the perfect school system. Let's reach out and touch through to the incidence goals for Lowell. His legacy is way out of touch for us. Let's quit being negative. There's a new red rubber ball rising, so let us play the game. Thank you.
Paul Georges.
Mr. Georges, you have three minutes, but in lieu of your position, you know, I'll allow more time.
Okay, I appreciate it very much. First of all, thank you for everybody who spoke. You were absolutely fabulous. I guess the thing that... My name is Paul Georges. I'm president of the United Teachers of Lowell. I think most of you know who I am. I've been around a long time. I've seen six superintendents during my time. And I heard people speak with passion. I heard parents speaking from the heart. I know when this man came in, two and a half years ago, we had protracted contract negotiations that had gone on for about a year and a half. They were coming to a head. I remember some school committee people being impressed because there was nearly 1,000 people out picketing out in front of this building. We've had three, we were able, because we worked collaboratively, be able to settle one contract, then another contract, that ultimately resulted in three contracts over the same period of time for every single unit in Lowell Public School System. That is no small accomplishment, but it was done because we worked collaboratively with an objective and a goal together. This superintendent has shown great creativity in putting in place certain things that have not only served the students better, for instance, the day school. Expansion, creation, expansion of the day school allows parents to have their special ed students close by. They're no longer on a bus for an hour, an hour and a half to try to get services. It is savings of about $2 million to this system. You have to acknowledge that is a sizable accomplishment, but if you ask the superintendent, he's going to say, "It wasn't me, it was the team." That's his answer in almost every single case. Better outcomes for kids at a lower cost. But he also knows that his strength is in the collaborative relationships that he's able to build. I've been here a long time. The three and out is hurting this system. This superintendent has two more years on his contract. Nobody can explain what shortcoming he has in order to warrant these three motions. I know he's been a vehement defender of the school system in many ways. Two years ago, the city manager was looking to take $500,000 from the school department account at the end of the fiscal year. He stood up to the city manager and said, "No, that's not... As long as it's encumbered, it belongs to the school system." There was a challenge about that. He came back, and he was absolutely right. In other cases, he's talked about some of the, for instance, the charge-offs of indirect costs. Now, that makes him a target to some folks. You're challenging the establishment. You're challenging whether the busing should be charged to the school system or it should be a responsibility of the city. What the heck do you want him to do? He's supposed to be an advocate for our kids and our school system. Don't criticize him for it. And he knows his rights. He is probably the superintendent that I would say is most familiar with knowing Massachusetts' general law, particularly education law. He has a diverse background. I appreciate that very much, but his ability to be able to work with folks is his greatest strength, and I wish you all knew it. On what grounds would this committee take a step to fire this superintendent? I understand it's only a motion to prepare for, you know, dismissal down the road on good cause, and I certainly understand what good cause means. But you can't diminish his accomplishments here, and the potential for that same kind of growth going into the future with his retention as superintendent of schools. I expected tonight to speak to you as a school committee because we wanted to re-initiate the kind of collaborative work that we had done back with Chris Scott many years ago. He totally supports it. The union supports it. The teachers that remember it support it. We're not doing that tonight because this distraction puts us off-base. It stands in the way of what could be. I'm asking you, in all fairness, don't punish this man because he's done his job in advocating and trying to produce the best outcomes to kids in this city. If we ever do have that collaborative work, maybe it would be beneficial for the school committee and the superintendent and everyone else to attend it at the same time because they might learn how to actually be able to work collaboratively to the benefit of these kids and our students. You're going to make a critical decision in a few minutes, I guess, as you look at these motions. Take everything into consideration, not the angst, not a harsh word, not a phrase that was uttered someplace. was uttered someplace, but the overall benefit the superintendent has had in allowing him to continue, and allow our kids and our teachers to have the benefit of his leadership in Lowell. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the committee. My name is Michael Long, I'm from the law firm of Long and DePietro in Hingham, Massachusetts. We're general counsel to the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, of which Dr. Kelfawi is a member in good standing. There are times when, as a lawyer, you admire-
Turn to Long. You have basically three minutes, but in respect to your position, as I did to Mr. Georges, you'll be allowed to speak beyond the three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this meeting being taped, by the way, videotaped?
Yes.
Okay.
It's on, it's live right now.
There are times when, as a lawyer, you, you have an opportunity to observe people speaking and advocating on behalf of clients, and what I have seen here tonight far exceeds anything that I could ever possibly muster, on behalf of Dr. Kelfawi. So, I will just make some observations and perhaps ask some questions. We're here on a Wednesday night in July, when presumably, most of the city is someplace else. Even so, the gallery is packed, the audience is packed, in support of your superintendent. The testimonials that have been made are emotional, sincere, deeply felt. Words like honor and integrity have been passed around with reference to Dr. Kelfawi. Those are standards that are difficult to meet, and we hope that these proceedings do meet those standards of honor and integrity. I've also heard people talk about the number of superintendents that you've had in the past several years. Well, it won't be just four, it'll be five, in 10 years, if you take this action with respect to Dr. Kelfawi. And so then you begin to ask, well, what are the common elements that have existed over that 10-year period? It's not the superintendents. So it's a little bit hard to pin on the superintendents and Dr. Kelfawi, the problems that the school district has experienced. That leads to the question of what is the source of the difficulty? Who is the source of the difficulty? Those are questions- Those are questions that these proceedings might reveal, or perhaps they'll be revealed in a different forum, under different circumstances, with people testifying under oath. There are no grounds, that's been stated, there are no grounds that have been put forth, this man, who is the subject of these testimonials, wasn't even given the courtesy of a discussion about what the nature or the reasons for the motions were. So, I have here two excellent evaluations, one from October of 2016, one from December of 2017, proficiencies across the board. I don't think you'll find many superintendents in the Commonwealth, Mr. Mayor, who receive exemplary recommendations, so all proficiencies, all four standards. What has changed since December of 2017? What offense has been committed, since the conclusion of the 2017 evaluation in the present date? What error, grave error, has been committed? What mistake, what insult? I think we'll find, as these proceedings continue, if they continue, that none of those questions have an affirmative answer. There'll be no evidence of any of that. So we're forced to conclude, once again, that it's a political dispute. The evidence at some point will generate an answer to that question, and we look forward to testing that evidence. And I guess the question that I would like to leave you with is, since this has all been done in silence, to whom have commitments been made? Who's the next superintendent? And-
I believe that's out of order, but that's all right, go ahead.
I do not believe it is out of order, sir, and I believe that for you to make that ruling from the chair is indicative that there is an answer to that question, that we will find out. So, these proceedings, hopefully, will cease here tonight, but if they do not, we will have another opportunity to talk. And I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your courtesy in extending the time for me, and on behalf of Dr. Kelfawi, I want to thank the citizens of Lowell, who have come out here to support him, and his truly remarkable display of support. Thank you.
All right, at this point, the makers of the motion, both will have an opportunity to speak, and I will ask then-Vice Chair Jackie Doherty to come up to the podium, so I may speak, and then open it up to the rest of the members. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you all for coming out tonight and speaking. I know there were heartfelt emotions, and I listened carefully. I know some of my colleagues and community members are close to the superintendent, and are unhappy with me for pushing forward with this initiative. So I want to make two things clear from the outset. First, I do not harbor any ill will toward the superintendent, nor do I take any pleasure in this motion. As a school committee member, it is my responsibility to ask questions, set policy, be informed, and at all times do what I think is best for our children, the district as a whole, and the city of Lowell. Second, I do not enter into this decision lightly. Dr. Kelfawi was on board when I joined this committee, and I welcome the opportunity to work with him with an open mind and positive expectations. But over the course of our tenure together, I have experienced growing concerns stemming from both his actions and his inactions. I referenced some of those concerns during my evaluation of the superintendent last December, when I gave him needs improvement in several key areas. Unfortunately, over the last six months, instead of improving, the situation has gotten worse, so that I no longer have confidence in his ability to lead us forward. In fact, I believe his leadership is detrimental to the district, when we have neither the time nor the resources to withstand it. It is not my intent to define the universe of these concerns here tonight, as that information will be shared in response to the motion we have before us. But to detract us, who attempt to charge me or my like-minded colleagues with micromanagement or political motivation, it is not micromanaging to question discrepancies in our budget. It is not micromanaging to require complete and timely information, so we are well-informed and able to make the best decisions. It is not micromanaging to ask for explanations regarding lack of adherence to district hiring policies, or delays in postings, and it is not micromanaging to expect motions get addressed, that the bidding process is handled correctly, and that accounting best practices are used. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I certainly agree with much of what my colleague had said. I will say for myself that I agree, this is not something that I enter into lightly, and it's not something that I relish in any way. I can appreciate the-
Doherty, Ms. Doherty?
Oh, sorry.
That's all, continue.
So I appreciate the perspective that was brought here tonight by everyone who came, and everyone who chose to speak. I will admittedly say I have a very different perspective, absolutely, and I think that, as we are looking at the seriousness of this situation, and I certainly take it quite seriously, the key areas that I think we'll be discussing, and as we talk about, you know, I think we are all, no one in this room is naive enough to believe that we're having this conversation without understanding the legal ramifications of it, for ourselves, and most importantly, for the city. So, the, I don't have the capacity or the ability to share specifics until we get to that point in the process. But I will say that concerns around substandard business practices have been a key area of concern for me, that there are issues within, overall, in the administration of HR practices that were inappropriate, and other, you know, situations that have happened through the district, where expressing an opinion has led to retribution, and to a culture, I think, that has been forced a lot of people underground with their opinions. It's not the kind of district that we want to be, and I think that, as we go through, and we are able to get full information, complete information, which has been direly lacking, we'll be able to have a much better and much more comprehensive understanding of exactly what's going on in the district, in terms of requested audits, requested outside eyes on our systems, to see, and be able to very clearly point to the deficiencies that now we're charged, both as a committee, as an administration, and as a community, with having to, having to fix. So, again, I thank everyone who came to share their opinions, and I do not doubt your sincerity or your genuine support, I absolutely appreciate it. I can only say that I am seeing things from a different perspective. Thank you.
Mayor Samaras?
Thank you, and I too want to thank the parents and the teachers that have come before us tonight. This is not an easy situation to be in, it's basically uncomfortable for everybody, but we do what we have to do. So I have a few notes that I'd like to address. I'd like to speak on the motion brought forth by our two colleagues. As a former educator and a school administrator, as someone inherently committed to the students and teachers of this district, I view both motions, both motions as timely and appropriate. Since joining this committee, I've had ongoing concerns with the running of our school system. As the mayor, I have tried to work with the superintendent and an often-divided committee. During this time, the concerns that I have encountered with the superintendent are not in one or two areas, but in several. They include, but are not limited to, his responsiveness to school committee motions, as well as responsiveness to other city departments, his level of civic involvement from the attendance of school-building committee meetings, to various school events, ongoing bidding irregularities, instances of insubordination, unacceptable administration of contracts, his apparent lack of understanding of posting and notice requirements for meetings, negative collective bargaining agreement language that, in my opinion, conflicts with the plain language and meaning of the ed reform laws, his recommended layoff of staff and the actions of the superintendent regarding his commitment to the school district. There have also been ongoing concerns regarding budgeting, finance practices under his leadership, such as year-end transfers in excess of $6 million, budget deficits, claims for unpaid bills. Issues of this nature had, in fact, caused me earlier in this year to request an audit on the school department. I made that motion some time ago, to date, it's along with other motions made by myself and my colleagues, remains outstanding. As a lifelong educator, and as your mayor, is my sincere belief that these issues cumulatively, and even individually, warrant tonight's action. For the past 40 years, my focus has been the students and education, or education of us, and the educators of our school system. My vote tonight, I made on their behalf, and with the knowledge and experience that our school system can do much better and be much better. As a result, I will support the committee members Martin and Doherty's first motion, and in addition, request it to be amended, to include the following, that prior to drafting a notice of termination, a comprehensive, independent audit be conducted and completed over the next few weeks, for a fuller understanding of the budget concerns I and others have raised. I also support the other two companion motions regarding administrative leave, and to temporarily appoint Ms. Durk and his acting superintendent. But I would like to make that amendment, if I were to get a second-
So we have an amendment, a second by Ms. Martin?
Yes, you approve, I mean, you, as maker, both makers, you accept that?
I'm fine with that amendment. So do we do a roll call vote? Or we're gonna have the speaker, sorry? Anybody else like to speak? Are you finished, Mayor Samaras? You want to come out?
Next, Mr. Cotto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I have a question for the city solicitor, who was here with us tonight. Are you in agreement with this motion, and that it is a legal one, considering his contract?
Could you clarify what you mean by considering his contract?
Well, I mean, I think there are, he has a contract, and according to that, is this the proper procedure to file this as a motion, prior to a cause being found? I mean, I just don't, I'm questioning whether or not that that is proper.
The motion, well, his contract states that the committee can provide the superintendent with reasons for a termination or a suspension. In this case, the motion simply lays out a request for the mayor to work with the law department, and prepare that formal notice with reasons, and I, you have heard tonight, apparently, some of those reasons. The motion also specifies that prior to service, that the entire committee would review the notice prior to it being served on the superintendent, should that be the vote of the committee. So, yes, there's nothing wrong with the motion, if action was to be taken by the superintendent, by the committee, under the terms of the contract, this would be the avenue that you would, you would follow.
So if we terminate the superintendent, is it the goal of this committee to pay him the rest of his salary for those, for that contract? And if so, and if not, are you prepared for a defense for a lawsuit?
Well, we won't be having public discussions regarding the contract, but I will say this, or any potential litigation, but I will say this, the contract specifically provides the right of a committee to terminate for a cause, and when that occurs, there is no provision in the contract regarding, regarding salary. But in any, to whatever extent you have questions regarding litigation, then we could make a motion, you can move into executive session, and be happy to have further discussions with you. But my advice would be not to have discussions of this nature, in any substantive way, without going into executive session.
Not to interrupt, but for everyone, if we're gonna ask any questions of anyone, please go through the chair, and so we can make sure everybody gets heard. Go ahead, Mr. Cotto.
I'm done, thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Mayor. It's pretty hard to speak at the end, especially after hearing Paul Georges speak. I've been sitting here for two years and roughly seven months. I think I've never, and I've worked in the state, I've worked in hostile environments, and I believe that the superintendent has worked in a hostile environment since the day I've been sitting here. With that said- With that said, the biggest issue that I think hurt the superintendent was definitely when he talked about indirect costs and maintenance of effort. We have my colleague to the right, some to the left, that want to take credit for maintenance of effort. He's the one that opened the can of worms, and then myself, Pop Gignac, and Steve Genren kinda hit the past city manager with it, that you take forty, roughly between forty and fifty million dollars off the school budget, and Sala was looking for, you know, where, where are you spending that money? So when he went after indirect cost, that was the beginning of his downfall, in my opinion. Number two, I think the next thing that got him in trouble is the way he handled the text message issue at the high school. I believe at that time, and like, one of my cousins was involved in that, so I feel like I have a right to speak on it. I think he should have been put on a pedestal, and we should have all thanked him very much for how fast he got through that issue. But with that said, I think that was the next time he had another person that started to come after him, and I think it's the city solicitor. I don't like the way the city solicitor has handled his contract with us in executive session. I think in executive session recently, the superintendent, if you want to call him a whistleblower, called the inspector general, because he beat the rest of them to it. They got upset, and I think that was the final nail in his coffin, and then two weeks later, here we are trying to get rid of the guy. Uh...
Mayor Hoy? Mayor? Mr. Hoy, the only thing I would ask is stay on point.
All right, I'm staying on point.
Don't make it personal with anybody.
And if you want to gather me, that's fine, because I'll go on City Life tomorrow and say what I want to say.
Absolutely.
So...
Fine.
I just have a couple more things. I've been on three school committees. I, I wasn't just here seven months. I can't blame Dominic, I can't blame Nutter. Well, I can blame Nutter a little bit, but I just, I just want to say one last thing. I've been on three school committees, and I, I had two contracts, that my motion, one for Judge Saposavis, I gave him a three-year deal, and boy, am I glad that I spearheaded giving this guy a three-year deal, because I think when it's all said and done, I think if we don't keep him, we're gonna suspend him with pay, I think we should all tonight say, let's keep him. He's, he's gonna be worth having. We need him right now, and if that doesn't happen, well, the elections come up fast, Mayor, so...
That's okay, but the one thing regarding this meeting tonight, I just don't want to make it into a circus, so.
I didn't try, and Mayor, I didn't have my hand written on paper, I just coming off the top of my head. It's been easy. I've been watching this for two years, seven months, into the hostile environment, the election's coming up, you're gonna see more, the register of deeds, we might see one there too, and I have the platform tonight, so people get ready to rumble, because we're gonna have a new election.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, everybody spoke eloquently, and I'm, I'm trying to put together what I could think of. I took time to go around and talk to some of your staff, some of the staff at the school department, and so I can understand, have a better understanding of what's going on. Took me by surprise in a way. A couple, a couple of facts that I could think of that we were worth mentioning is the, for the superintendent, is that school performance have been better each year since he became a superintendent. And I believe in last April, at the finance subcommittee meeting, the chairman of the finance subcommittee meeting mentioned that he wanted to eliminate both the superintendent and CFO position, because a year before I became school committee, there was some financial transaction that he thought was illegal, but as it turned out, instead, superintendent saved the school department and the city by doing what he did. Superintendent was probably the only person in Lowell who understood that at that time. We forgot to thank him for what he did back then. He put a great effort to find more money for the school department. This year, he was given $2.6 million short, and we had to tell him to do what he could do to have a tough cut. Tonight, we are going to vote on the very important issues, important issues of all for the Lowell School Department. Not only will it define who Lowell, Massachusetts is, but also set precedent for many things to follow. It will go down in history, and people all over will talk about it for many years and many decades. I want to attend this meeting with an open mind, actually, as a school committee member and a person who will be voting on this in the next few minutes. I had not received or told or talked to about the cause for the termination, and I just want to wonder if my colleague who will be voting tonight have heard or know anything about it, just like me have not heard about it? Put your hands up, just want to know. I just want to make sure I'm not the only one. I just want to make sure that, for us, that my colleagues, you, if you have not heard or know the cause for the termination, because I don't know anything about the cause, and I just want to know if, if you don't know, just like me? Or am I being singled out, I'm the only one don't know?
Mr. Lay?
Anyway, I go on, sir.
Excuse me, you don't mind me saying, what you're doing now is you just can't have a conversation with the members of the board. You have to respect the chair and go through the chair, okay? Let's stay on point. You can make your points, but do it in a proper fashion.
As I said, I came here with an open mind, I, because I don't know what the good cause is, and I want to hear what the speaker was, had to say, so I could weigh what the good cause for termination against the, what the, what the speaker had to say. And I think our obligation is for the school department, for the school performance, for the students of Lowell. The vote, the vote I am about to make is not about me or about games. The most important job for all of us is to serve students' population, at the same time, do what we could with a very tight budget that is right in front of us. I'm voting tonight using three principles. One, I want to know, is it good for the school of Lowell? Number two, is it right? And number three, is it fair? It is also important not to undermine the common sense and the intelligence of the people of Lowell. I want to do the right thing, be fair, so that I can walk down the history with a smile on my face, knowing that I've been honest and been honored. Thank you.
Thank you. I have been here for only seven months.
Thank God.
I know it seems longer to many of you. Before I came here, I had a blog, and I advocated very strongly for the Lowell School Committee and the superintendent at that time to enroll this city in the CEP program. There was hesitancy to do that. Very shortly after Dr. Kelfawi came on board, I believe it was Ms. Scott who asked him to please look into that, so they could basically get me to shut up and move on. And thanks to Dr. Kelfawi, bringing it to Boston and then coming back to the school committee who was elected at that time, every student in this city gets a free breakfast and lunch because of the CEP program. It wasn't until I started seeing some of the way the finances had been handled and reported that got me concerned, including at one point in the month of June, seeing a million dollars in transfers take place that included a large amount being charged to a revolving food service account, including $80,000 of the superintendent's salary. That was all straightened out, but the private auditors, Powers and Sullivan, stated that it was not the normal accounting practice. That account has been audited now, and we find ourselves in a position that we may have to not be able to charge a lot of things from that account, because we may have to reimburse it because of some of the things that occurred. Mr. Lay mentioned something. You know, when Mr. Lay and I were elected in November, we met with the superintendent in an orientation in December at the school department. At that time, we were given copies of the budget book, the policy book, and several other items that we would need. It was not until February that I discovered that the policy, that the budget book that I had received was not the budget that was submitted to the city of Lowell. Now, I was told the reason that the superintendent submitted the budget. One thing I have learned in my short seven months here is that no matter what we say as a school committee, the final appropriation comes from the city of Lowell. Whether the school committee had taken the vote that they should have, they were never given that opportunity, but no matter what they voted, the city was not going to put in more than what the city council had voted for. While I understand the superintendent's explanation of why he submitted it, because again, people may not realize that when the budget is submitted to the city, it is not in the same form that you see in the budget book. It is broken down to give a lot of detail what gets charged to what, what the DESI auditing is. And I generally know that when I talk about finances, everybody's eyes glazes over, but unfortunately, under the Education Reform Act that has been mentioned here tonight, the rules say that the school committee has two major issues that they have control over. Under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 37, the superintendent, the school committee has the power to select and terminate the superintendent and to establish his or her compensation, and the budget. The school committee reviews and approves. If putting in the budget was not a big deal, why for eight months, eight months, did the superintendent not bring that information forward? I work in the private sector. If I did something and did not tell my boss for eight months, I would not be employed. I could have, in my opinion, made a bigger case of it in February than I did, but to be honest, one of the reasons I did not was because I did not want to embarrass four of my colleagues who sit here, who should have known that they had to take a vote on the budget. I was hoping that this year, when we received the budget, we would get more information. However, after listening to the superintendent's presentation the night of the budget, when we were at the stock close to school, a few things that may be noted in the budget, and one that I will point out that wasn't, has become clearer. Of all the things that was talked about, one thing that was not mentioned was that the superintendent was pushing $500,000 from the contractually obligated sick leave buyback account that gets paid for retirement. He was pushing that to the 2019 budget, leaving us with a structural deficit for next year before we had even dealt with cuts for this year. It was a line item footnote, but unless you read every page of the budget, you may not have seen it. It isn't noted anywhere in the budget that we received $108,145 from the city in PEG or Comcast funding in the 2017-2018 school year, nor has it been brought up to the school committee, at least that I know of, that when the superintendent submitted that budget last June, it showed that he had charged $145,846 in salaries to that account. He put a footnote in that budget that said both the educational TV coordinator and the TV associate producer will be charged to the Comcast account for the 27-2018 year. I still don't know how those salaries were fully paid last year, when they were scheduled for $145,000 and we received $108. In this year's budget, there is no footnote, there was no verbal communication, nothing was pointed out very clearly, that this year, the superintendent has decided to take all four positions in the production studio and move them all to that PEG account at a cost of $292,875, despite the fact that we only received $108,450 in PEG funding. Thankfully, tonight, or this afternoon, we have heard that the Joint Legislative Committee has come out with a budget, and Lowell could be receiving somewhere between an additional $1 million to $1.1 million in Chapter 70 funding, which will help us not only save those positions, but some others as well. The superintendent, when he presented us the budget, did not highlight that this year he had to, or he chose to, take $254,000 that was charged to a revolving food services account last year and roll that into general funding. Tonight on the agenda, we are being asked to approve a payment for work done in the summer of 2017 at a cost of $6,590 to a school principal for supposedly being an onsite coordinator for overseeing the construction project of four classrooms. I don't know what made that principal a construction supervisor, but for 10 extra days, he's being paid $6,590, and if he worked eight hours a day, that's eighty... eight hours a day, that's eighty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents an hour. I do not know of one DPW employee in this city that gets that hourly rate, even at double time. How was he hired to do that without a contract or preapproval from the school committee? And why has it taken almost eleven months for it to be brought to the school committee's attention? At our last meeting on June 20th, we as a school committee passed this motion. Request the superintendent supply the school committee with a copy of the budget submitted to the auditor on the day it is submitted, and schedule a finance subcommittee meeting to review how information regarding the budget will be reported to the school committee going forward. As I pointed out, when the budget gets sent to the auditor, it is in a different format. It is broken down and much easier to read and understand. That motion passed unanimously by all members of this committee, seven to zero. That budget was submitted to the city on June 22nd. It is now July 18th, and we still have not received a copy of that budget. How is that anything but insubordination? Not receiving information or receiving incorrect information, to me, it's not being transparent, it's not beneficial to the school committee, it does not help us to be able to do our job and to make the right decision. Those are some of the reasons that I'm supporting tonight's motion. The motion isn't to fire the superintendent tonight, but to have the mayor work with the city attorney to prepare a notice of termination for just cause. I have heard tonight that this is political. I have no idea why I'm, it's being called political. When the superintendent wanted to appoint the head of Lowell High School without going through what he considered to be a long drawn-out process, including having reviews by boards or whatever you want to call them, what Jackie, screening committees, yes, I supported the superintendent. Under the Education Reform Law, it's very clear to me, our role is to hire a superintendent to approve an assistant or deputy superintendent at his recommendations. I think we can hire a business manager, a special ed coordinator, a lawyer, those are all in the Education Reform Act. When I brought in motions for blizzard bags, the superintendent and his staff had already been working on it, we agree on those. When I brought in the motion from our committee to have a citywide recess policy, the assistant and the deputy superintendent could not have been quicker to respond and to work with us. I have worked with the superintendent on issues. It's not political. To make things clear, no matter if the superintendent gets terminated tonight or not, in my view, to make it clear to anyone who wants to criticize or say that this is political, Jay Lang is not walking in that door, and if he does, he won't have my vote. This is not a political move. How do you go eight months without being told a budget was submitted? How do you go from August until April, when this committee, or the past committee rather, voted six hundred thousand dollars in transfers, and none of those transfers were made? In the private sector where I work, I can't do that. If I can't trust the information, especially when it comes to the budget, that we are receiving is not correct, how do you expect us to do our job that we were elected by the citizens to do? If you're unhappy with me next November, as Mr. Howie said, it's coming up, you're welcome to vote me out. But as long, but as long as I am an elected member of this committee, under the Education Reform Law, I am doing what I consider to be my job, and I will support the motions tonight. Thank you. I request that we move.
Question.
We move the question.
All right. Will the clerk please read the motion?
The motion is for good cause, request the mayor and the city solicitor, prepare a notice of termination pursuant to Section 5 of the employment contract between the superintendent of schools, Salak Kelfawi, and the Lowell School Committee. The notice shall be reviewed and approved by the committee prior to the service upon the superintendent. Also, prior to that, a drafting of the notice of termination, a comprehensive and independent audit be conducted and completed over the next few weeks for a fuller understanding of the budget concerns that the mayor and the other members of the committee have raised.
Roll call.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir.
May I have two seconds?
Yes.
How could we?
We've moved the question, but.
Yes, sir. I just want to ask you, I mean, just want to have a mayor comment. How could I make a vote on blindly without knowing what a good cause is, what the cause of the termination is?
Did you hear? This is now going to be in process. It's going to go, we're going to work with the city solicitor regarding this issue. It's not set at this point. Roll call.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Nutter.
Yes.
Mayor Samaris.
Yes.
Mr. Decoto.
No.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Howie.
No.
Mr. Lay.
No.
Four yeas, three nayes, motion passes.
All right. Next, next motion, I'm Ms. Doherty and Ms. Martin. Effective immediately, place the superintendent paid administrative lead. Need any, any discussion on this matter? Yes, Mr. Howie.
Just doesn't make sense to me right now where we're missing all kinds of leadership in our school department, because a lot of people don't have the power to hire people who they want for HR and everything else, and we're going to get rid of him and pay him to not be here when he could do more good for the school system by staying here.
That's all. Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Nutter.
Yes.
Mayor Samaris.
Yes.
Mr. Decoto.
No.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Howie.
No.
Mr. Lay.
No.
Four yeas, three nayes, motion passes.
All right. Next. Good luck. All right. Motion eight, I'm Ms. Doherty and Ms. Martin. I'm sorry. Motion nine, I'm Ms. Doherty and Ms. Martin. Effective immediately, appoint Janine Durkin as acting superintendent of schools. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I should have maybe talked about this when we were at motion six, seven, but it might be too late to talk about this, but I want to talk about it.
You can hold, Mr..
Yeah, I'm just waiting for a second. When we talk about individuals, like on this motion right here, this is, this is about Mrs. Durkin right now, and her name is on the agenda, so I know, I think it should, all of this should have been in executive session, but it's not. But one thing I want to leave out, and now that these votes are over, I remember going into the superintendent when I first got elected, and I said to the superintendent, he said to me, I want to give a fifteen thousand dollar raise to Mrs. Durkin. At that time, I said to the superintendent.
Officer, close the door, please.
I just feel that this is going to show what kind of character the superintendent had. And I wanted to say it, like I said, two motions ago, but I was a little bit confused on all the different people that talked, and I didn't want to repeat myself. But I said to the superintendent, I walked in, I said, Mr. Superintendent, Mrs. Durkin's in charge of the Resource Center, and I believe it's a hostile environment, she's in charge of busing, which I think was still in executive session, and we're going to have a lot more to talk about there. And I said, I think at the time she was making around one thirty-five, right now she makes close to one sixty. And I said to him, I'm having a hard time on that vote to give her that type of raise. And he said to me, Bob, he said, you got to vote for the raise. He said, that woman has so many things under her umbrella, from busing and special ed and discipline, and the list goes on and on and on. I think she has too much under her umbrella, to be honest with you, and now we're going to put her in a spot, and I hope she wants to be in this spot. I know you're very capable, the superintendent gave you a pat and a sitting next to you that you guys can get through this. I'm not worried about it. But he was real, real classy when it came to you, because it's not your fault because the Resource Center fell apart, the Moonvalus wasn't working right, busing had all those issues, it just happened to be under your umbrella. But that man told me, Bob, vote for her raise. And then that man later promoted her. So I'm not worried about who's running this, because I know she's not going to let you fail anyways. But I had to say that, and I want you to know, that's what this superintendent said to me. That's all I have to say. I have to go with Mrs. Durkin, and I think she'll do a good job. She's going to have a hard time, but we should all try to help her. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Howie. Any further discussion? Mr. Decoto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Were you ever approached about this motion, Ms. Durkin?
Thank you.
Ms. Lay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Durkin, I think you are very capable, and you have always shown me that you are very eager and easy to work with, fun to work with. This motion is not about you, it's about the principle of the three motions that clamped, that clumped together with your name on it. I did not vote to support the first motion, and it makes sense for me, for all three motions, I will vote, I will not vote for all three. If I were to vote support one, I would support all, and if I am against one, I am against all. But if, when you become superintendent, I'm so eager to work with you. According to what I'm seeing tonight, you will get four votes anyway, but for my principle, I will not vote yes to support your, this motion, so thank you.
Yes.
Just to point a clarification, I do not oversee transportation. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. But the thing is, as deputy superintendent, there's an expectation, who, in the past, who's ever been deputy that's taken over temporary basis, the superintendent's position. Mr. Nutter.
I just want to make sure, Ms. Durkin, you don't mind taking on this rather large task at this time, do you?
Number one has always been students of Lowell, and it will continue to be so.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Decoto.
Just to be clear, I echo what Mr. Lay had to say about you. I think you are a super qualified person to take over the position, but in keeping with my not going with the first two motions, I will say no to this motion. It's no reflection on you. Thank you.
Roll call.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Nutter.
Yes.
Mayor Samaris.
Yes.
Mr. Decoto.
No.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Howie.
Yes.
Mr. Lay.
No.
Five yeas, two nayes, motion passes.
Okay. We have a number, a number of issues, but we have a meeting for this coming Monday. I would suggest going into recess to put this.
It's a subcommittee.
It was a subcommittee, okay. Could we cha, I'm sorry. We have a subcommittee meeting for Monday. I'd like to change this to a continuation of this meeting. Yes, any discussion on this?
Could I suggest we see if we have a different date available next week, only because, as I mentioned tonight, the House and the legislature just came out with a budget that would give us additional funding, and we may actually by Tuesday or late Monday of next week, have an idea of exactly how much we're getting, and we're going to need, you know, to address some, some positions that we may want to put back in and deal with this extra money. And I'd rather try to do everything at one meeting than, you know, than have, have to have a couple of meetings. I will be glad to go with the majority on this. I'm free anytime for the next two weeks.
Well, the issue, the issue is, we've got a lot of information, you know, things to do, but at this point, I think it'd be unfit of Mrs. Durkin to pile us on without giving her a chance to review this and for us to review where we are at this point. Ms. Doherty.
If I could just make a request respectfully, I think we should poll and see what night would work. Maybe it is better to delay. I would like to just take one item that is on the agenda tonight, because we have someone here registered to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I, I don't know if there's any, any other items of people that are waiting to speak, but I would want to, out of respect for this person's time coming here tonight. And that, I believe, was the, the naming of the.
Cardinal O'Connell School?
Yes. I'm not finding it on.
It's A2.
Would my colleagues be okay with us moving that forward on the agenda?
Thank you. Kevin McHugh, 121 Mount Pleasant Street. I am here tonight to speak about the renaming of the Cardinal O'Connell McHugh Alternative Program and why the McHugh Alternative Program name means a lot to me and my family. Twenty-one years ago, on a rainy day in April, my brother David McHugh was on bus duty at the Sullivan Middle School, and a fight broke out between two students. He rushed over to break up the fight and was pushed to the ground. While he was on the ground and trying to get up, two students started to kick him repeatedly. He was kicked all over his body and also received multiple kicks to the head. As a result of these injuries, he later died. Shortly after the passing, our family was contacted by then-superintendent George Sappasaris. George Sappasaris told us that he was recommending to the school committee that the alternative programs will be renamed the David, the McHugh Alternative Programs in the name of my brother David. To this date, the alternative programs have always been called the McHugh Alternative Program. I do understand that the Cardinal O'Connell School will be changing the use and becoming an early childhood center. However, I am sure that the students that are currently enrolled in that alternative program will be relocated to a different facility. So therefore, I do respectfully ask that the administration, the school committee, to have the McHugh Alternative Program name be transferred as well incorporated as part of the official name of the new location of these students. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty.
If I could, through your honor, address a question to the speaker. Right now, the plan with the alternative program is to embed it into the Sullivan School. Whether that continues or not, I'm not sure, because there were a lot of concerns around doing that. So I don't know, would that be a, I mean, and Ms. Durkin has her hand up, so maybe she has another.
Ms. Durkin.
Thank you. So the, the proposition at this point is that the early, that the Cardinal O'Connell will become an early learning center, and we're requesting that the Cardinal O'Connell School stay the Cardinal O'Connell School, which it has always been, with the attachment of the Cardinal O'Connell at, the early learning center at the Cardinal O'Connell School or the Cardinal O'Connell Learning, Early Learning Center. That being said, we are.
That being said, we are very cognizant that the McHugh Alternative Program needs to remain the same. If the school, when the school does move to the Sullivan, it will not be the Sullivan School, it will be the McHugh Alternative Program at the Sullivan School.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that matter? Mr. Nutter?
As long as we're continuing, I believe there is a motion here about day school hours, and I saw Jen here, so it may be worthwhile if Ms. Durkin wants to deal with this tonight.
I'll just, if we can get through a few of these things, but as you're aware, I just want to make sure that when we go through this, we're giving Ms. Durkin enough adequate time, if we can get some information and put some aside, but I'd like to make a decision. If we take a recess, would Wednesday be a possibility for everybody, following Wednesday? Anybody find it impossible to do? We'll have tomorrow to, you know, everybody report to whatever, if there's a problem, so we can be sure that everybody can be there. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Nutter.
I yield to Ms. Durkin, who has her hand up.
Thank you. We do have the request on the floor to vote on the Cardinal O'Connell School, since we do have Lisa Van Thiel, the, the Early Childhood Coordinator here this evening. We also have Jennifer McChrystal representing the day school here, and also Lisa Van Thiel, he is here to, could present the progress monitoring report card data. They have been here a long time, and just out of respect, if that's okay with the committee, it would be helpful to get those reports out to you today.
I make a motion that we allow those items to be addressed this evening.
Okay. Second, by Ms. Doherty, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you have to pick it on the budget and on the agenda and keep it coming.
And, and it's, I was waiting, I'm sorry, I was waiting for Ms. Durkin. Just hold on, we just don't have the ready agenda. Read the motion.
The, it's new business, the renaming of the Cardinal O'Connell School. We need a motion to approve the renaming.
Motion to approve the renaming?
But we're not renaming it, right?
There were two choices. Could you read them, because I wasn't able to open the document? Certainly, the Early Learning Center at the Cardinal O'Connell School or the Cardinal O'Connell Early Learning Center.
What's that, Mr. Nutter?
I make a motion to have him be the Cardinal O'Connell Early Learning Center.
Second, by Ms. Martin?
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right, next.
The preschool progress monitoring and report cards, need a motion to approve.
By Mr. Dakota, second.
I believe we have a speaker.
Lisa Van Thiel, Early Childhood Coordinator. Yes, thank you, and especially since you have had a lot on your plate today and over the last week. I'm asking, as I wrote in the letter, for us to consider moving forward to an in-house report card that is aligned to the curriculum frameworks, rather than the Teaching Strategies School program that we have been purchasing since our higher-order teaching grant has been paying for that, those licensing fees, it would be about $10,000, which we don't anymore have in our budget. So we have spent over the last year, as I mentioned in the letter, working with teachers to create this report card, and am really looking for your support so that we can move forward and finalize it and train people by the fall.
Ms. Doherty?
I would make a motion to approve the preschool progress monitoring report cards.
Motion, seconded by Mr. Nutter.
Ms. Martin? Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Six yeas, one present, approved.
Thank you.
Are there any more? We want to continue, or should we just... Yes.
So there are two additional, the day school hours, and then there's also a, a conference request that was on a former school committee agenda that never took place, so that person is scheduled to attend tomorrow. So I just ask those two items to be taken tonight.
Okay. So we have the motion to approve the day school hours by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Ms. Martin. Any, any discussion on this? Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
And the conference, Ms. Durkin? We'll just take, we'll just take both of them, I guess. So a motion to approve both conference requests, and your motion to accept by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Nutter, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Motion to suspend the meeting until next Wednesday?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Second on that, Mr. Dakota, thank you. Till Wednesday.
Yes.
Thank you.
Who's taking these?
I think we've already signed already.